If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exist. And that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the city of Newark. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member board of adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four votes to grant the variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of notice of the decision. And that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance and the variance is granted, you too may appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of the decision of this board. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint with all supporting documentation to the zoning board secretary. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Book Meetings Act, also as the sunshine, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by notifying the Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, the Newark City Clerk, and posting a copy on the bulletin board in the basement of Newark City Hall. In addition to adequate notice on the Open Book Meetings Act, notice of this remote public meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the basement of Newark City Hall. As required by statute and placed on the um uh city's website. Uh also as permitted by statute. Members of the public may notify the host that you would like to ask questions or make a statement by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen or mobile device. If you are calling on the telephone, please press star nine to alert us to the sound. I remind everyone that uh we are quasi judicial board. And if an appeal is taken, we are required to provide a copy of the official transcript to the Superior Court. Uh comments in the chat are not part of our official transcript. We want to make sure that any questions you have, the answers to those questions and your statements are part of the official transcript. So please, uh I ask you to refrain from using the chat. Use the raised hand feature. Uh additionally, when you use the chat, it pops up on the screen, it's disruptive. Um uh as if you were shouting out loud if we were meeting in public, so uh please refrain from using the chat, use the raised hand feature. The meeting of the Board of Adjustment will now come to order. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the hall?
Uh Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hardisty.
Present.
Commissioner Comissarius.
Present.
Uh Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Uh Commissioner Monford. Vice Chair Monford. Commissioner Kobian.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Chair.
Present. Are there any requests for adjournments or postponements? Request for adjournments or postponements? So please identify yourself by using the raised hand feature. I see no raised hands. Let's go on first case.
Time is now six twenty-five. And the first application is application ZB A twenty-five dash zero four uh four forty-three uh South Ninth Street. In the C two zone, applicant proposes a new construction of two-family dwelling with a garage. Applicant is seeking C variances for insufficient lot size, insufficient lot width, exceeding maximum impervious lot coverage, exceeding maximum front yard setback, insufficient rear yard setback, insufficient onsite trees. Site plan approval is not required for this application. This application was adjourned from the June twelfth hearing.
Council Perez uh is is your entire team in?
I do see Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Uh the only one missing is Mr. McDonough, John McDonough.
Uh he's just coming in.
Okay.
I think there's something with your audio, counsel.
Oh, I know, I'm I'm uh you're funny.
Uh if there are any objectors, uh this is application ZB A dash twenty-five dash zero four, four-four-three South Ninth Street. If there are any objectors to to this application, and as I said, you please identify yourself by using the raised hand feature. The Board of Adjustment made the following findings of fact with respect to this property. It's located in Newark's West Side neighborhood, on the western side of South Ninth Street, between Fifteenth and Sixteenth Avenue. The lot area is approximately two thousand two hundred seventy-six square feet. The surrounding land uses consist of two and a half and three-story detached dwellings. Um I note that I see no raised hands for any objectives. Counsel, would you?
Good evening, Jennifer Corillo Perez of Comfolly on behalf of the applicant owner Brick City Development LLC.
Thank you. Um counsel?
Yes, uh good evening, everyone. Um this property is located in the C two zone. Um as was just mentioned, and the applicant's before you this evening on a variance, on variance relief for the development of this new three-story two-family dwelling with a car garage on this existing vacant lot. Um that is a permitted use in the C two zone. The lot size here uh is two thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet, which is an existing non-conforming condition and triggers a variance relief that's being requested this evening. That includes the lot size, lot width, rear yard setback, front yard setback, and impervious lot coverage. Also noted, the variances are insufficient onsite trees. However, you'd be pleased to know that we will be providing all the trees on there, so that variance will be eliminated, and you will hear that through the testimony of our professional, who is Mr. George Fernandez. He's our project architect, and then we will have Mr. McDonough present as well um his testimony as it relates to the justification for the variance relief that's being requested this evening. Uh we have two reports that we received in connection to this application. First is a planner's report that's dated April twenty-ninth. And we also received a report uh from the Department of Water and Sewer dated August eighth twenty-twenty-five. And we'll stipulate to the record that we will comply with those conditions and recommendations in the reports. Um and as a matter of housekeeping, we'd just like to note for the record that while this matter was adjourned, we did renotice because there was a notice issue at that time in June, and an affidavit of notice was submitted to the board secretary um uh by letter dated August seventh. Uh and that was submitted allowing this uh this application to pu- to proceed this evening uh with jurisdiction. So if I can ask Mr. Fernandez to please be sworn in.
Ms. Fernandez, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear affirm the testimony about to provide you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Uh could you please state your name, your address, and your relationship to this application?
Jorge Fernandez, F E R N A N D E S. Registered architect, business address seventy-five Parker Street, Newark, New Jersey, and my license is current.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Fernandez, well-known to the sport, will accept him as an expert in the field of architecture, counsel?
Thank you. Um Mr. Fernandez, your office prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application, correct?
Correct.
And if you can um present, please walk the board through the proposed plan for the development of the house. And just for a point of clarification, these are the plans that were submitted, so we will not be marking them as exhibits, correct?
Correct.
Great, alright. If you can proceed, please.
Okay, so here's the existing parcel uh which shows a highly irregular parcel of land. We have uh it is effectively at an angle to South South Ninth Street. Uh we do have a existing structure on the right-hand side. Uh and uh uh the the lot was uh effectively unimproved for many years. I didn't find any evidence of any structure being on here. Uh so what we're proposing to do is uh uh have a two-family home built on the premises. Uh we're which will be fifty-seven feet eight inches by uh eighteen foot ten inches in width. And uh we will have a entrance off of South Ninth Street, a two-car garage. And in the back, we'll have uh the trash area, the condensers. And we'll have a uh a gla- a grass area in the rear yard. Uh we would need, I believe, uh thirty percent of uh of that set of a setback. Uh I believe we're a little short of that. Uh we tried to comply as best as we can, but uh they've given the irregular nature of the site. It gave us a little bit of a hardship to 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 comply with that. But we still have twenty-six foot eight inches, I believe, at the sh- at the shortest distance uh or or in this uh case, the uh the more northernly corner of the property. Uh we can't, we do, we'll have a ten-foot wide driveway to give access to the garage. Uh we can plant two trees in the rear yard, in the grass area. And we can plant a sidewalk tree in front of the house on the sidewalk. So I believe that'll take care of the uh tree requirement. And uh effectively, the house, I can go into the floor plans quickly. We have a uh standard two-family home where you have a two-car garage, recreation space in the back. Uh and then upstairs, we have two three-bedroom apartments, uh three beds, two baths, one laundry closet, kitchen, and living room. And uh the same on the uh third floor plan. We have the front elevation, again, brick masonry, stucco composition. We have some transom on the third uh windows on the third floor. We give a little bit of a clear story living room uh for that third-floor tenant. Uh and uh the sides, we still have a lot of windows on the side that we can have windows. Uh that's the northern side. We're trying to provide two windows in the bedrooms. And of course, the uh southern side is on the property line, so cannot have windows. And uh the rear side, the rear elevation has uh uh three windows in the master bedroom and four windows in the rec space on the on the ground floor. Uh that pretty much concludes my testimony. I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
Counsel?
Uh sure, Mr. Fernandez, I just wanted to clarify, we will comply with uh we do the, as you indicated, the uh the project does have the two parking spaces. And the variance relief that we're requesting simply relates to the setbacks by virtue of the lot being um less than the twenty-five hu- hundred square feet requirement, correct, and being irregular?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and you've had an opportunity to review the report from the Department of uh Water and Sewer, is that correct?
Correct.
And you have no issues with respect to, you know, meeting with them and addressing their concerns that were raised or the questions that were raised in the report?
Correct, we can comply.
Okay, great. I have no additional questions from Mr. Fernandez.
So so just for the record, counsel, your applicant is agreeing as a condition of approval to supply all required trees, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a con- and also as a condition of approval to comply with each and every concern raised in the report from the uh Department of Water and Sewer, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions for the architect from the board? Questions for the architect from the board? Ms. Juma?
Good evening, uh Nana Juma, zoning officer speaker. I do have a question. The floor, the floor plan that uh Mr. Fernandez showed for this project, can he pull it up? Because um I think ours that we have on file is slightly different. The area towards I guess the side on the property line where there are no windows, closer to the area labeled rec center. There's two spaces between that rec space and what you label as mechanical room. Um one, the version that is being shown on the screen, I would like to know what those spaces are labeled at or what they would be used as. Because the version that we have here on file has a stairwell that leads to the first floor, and it does not have these two rows there.
Mr. Fernandez, are these the plans that uh were there any modifications made? You're muted, sorry.
I believe, uh I believe that these are the plans that the planner saw because we have the uh twenty-six foot eight rear yard setback.
Did you hear my question, Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, I.
The two rooms.
Yes, I heard the question. Uh the the two rooms are shown as empty. Uh they could be used as storage uh for the uh for the uh tenant. Uh whoever is gonna use this recreation space, which most likely will be the second-floor tenant, or wherever the owner chooses to live. Uh yeah, that's that's why we're not showing a bathroom down there, because we we we're not showing the stair going down to the uh to the uh rec space, because these uh the this layout is a little bit condensed because from us trying to uh comply with the rear yard setback as much as possible. Uh and we removed the stair. And uh we 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 therefore removed that bathroom in the rec space.
I don't think I understand what you're saying and how it relates to the rear yard setback. This is interior and it's in the middle of the structure. Um you're saying that you removed the bathroom in the stairwell, so there's no connection to the either of the apartments, except that it's accessed through the outside of the building. It has a separate door. And those spaces will be used as, can you repeat what those spaces would be used as?
Uh if those smaller spaces, I I would imagine would be used as storage.
Okay, so two things, Mr. Chair of the Board agrees. One, we would like Mr. Fernandez to provide the office a copy of this version of the plan, even though he believes the planner has reviewed it. And in that version, to label those areas as what he says is going to be used as storage.
Um while we're talking about those two rooms, Ms. Fernandez, uh are those windows that are shown?
Where?
Well, I'm looking. I'm looking at the room um at that at that garage where that car that goes all the way in and there's a door from the uh uh that goes into that room from the uh I I don't know what we're looking at.
Correct. Uh the this door here that gives access from the garage to the rec space. Uh then you have a threshold that gives access to the recreation space.
So 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 you just called in a threshold, that little white?
Yes, exactly.
So what is that? Is there a wall there? Is there a window there? Is there a door there?
It it's, uh right now, we're not showing a door. But it's a, it's just an opening, so the the door, the fire-rated door is at the garage. So once you come into the space, you can either go into the uh uh rec space or go into this storage area here on the left.
And I, so I would assume that's gonna be another door then, right? Is that fair to say?
It could be a door, it could be a uh uh one of those uh uh closet doors. Uh the the space is intended for storage, the small sev- five-foot by seven-foot four space.
Why, why make it, why make it two separate rooms? That you have to enter one to get to the other? Why not just make it one large room?
Well, we have the uh garage, right? That needs to have a separation uh from the rest of the space. Uh for, so once you come in there, yes, this wall is here. Uh but it 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 could be opened.
Yeah.
And enlarge in the threshold.
So it's, i- is that north? I I mean, give me some.
That would be, that would be uh west.
Okay, so if you go east, there's a a a a a wall that separates those two areas.
Yes.
The rooms.
Yes.
Why, why have that?
Uh it's a, it's to stay as a storage area, but I mean it's uh that's.
Have one big beautiful, I mean, and keeping it with the themes of the day. If you break that wall out, you could have one big beautiful storage area.
Correct.
Correct.
So why not?
Can we just, can we agree to do that, Mister Mister uh? I don't believe, if there's no structural issue to Mister.
Uh there's no structural issue.
Okay. Then can, I would say we would agree to that, Chairman. We would agree to eliminate that wall and so that it's one beautiful, large space.
And and if you continue going east, then you have a mechanical room.
Yes.
Correct.
And that also that only has access through the garage.
Yes. I, the reason for that is for uh maintenance purposes. I mean, it could be accessed from the garage. But it it could also be accessed from inside the recreation room. It's really not a uh.
Are three-family homes allowed in this uh uh area?
I, I believe they are.
You agree with that, Mr. Hazel? You're muted.
The C two zone, yes, they are.
Thank you. Um Commissioner Jones?
Solely for clarity, can you please walk us through the um the unnamed storage room? And also explain the other storage area and exactly where stairs are located, just for clarity.
Sure. So the front, uh we start, we have sta- uh some exterior stairs that go up to the stoop. And there's two doors. And those doors give access, the one on the left with stairwell that goes up to the third floor. The one on the right, the stairwell that goes up to the second-floor apartment. Then underneath those stairs, there's a small storage area. And then beyond that, we have the mechanical space that opens from the garage. And beyond that, we have the recreation room.
And it's also agreed that the wall in the center that divides the two storage areas that will come down? Was that agreed upon?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
And and counsel, uh just to underscore Commissioner Jones' request, uh your applicant agrees to uh uh take that middle wall down uh as a condition of approval, is that correct? Counsel?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, that is correct.
Good. Um anything further, Commissioner Jones?
In the mechanical area, is there a sink? I'm try- can you explain us what exactly would what will be inside of the mechanical area?
The uh mechanical area has the HVAC for the uh second-floor unit. And it has two water heaters. One for the second floor, one for the third floor. And the reason for that is so that for maintenance purposes, it's easier to swap out a water heater at the garage than at the third floor, and that's why they're both here.
And is there also an HVAC for the third uh floor?
No, the one for the third floor is is uh within that apartment. In the closet.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Other questions from the board? Um other questions for from the public for um the architect? Are there any questions from members of the public for the architect? If so, please uh identify yourself by using the raised hand feature. You can uh find that at the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, press star nine. I ask you to do so now, please.
I see no hands, Mr. Chair.
Nor do I. Counsel?
Thank you. Uh thank you, Mr. Fernandez. I'd like to now ask uh Mr. McDonough to please be sworn in.
Mr. Mc- please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony about to provide be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, give us your address, and app- and relationship to this application, please.
My name is John McDonough. I am the project planner. My business address is one oh one Gibraltar Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Mr. McDonough, uh is your planning license in the state of New Jersey in full force and effect?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Well, uh Mr. McDonough is well-known to this board. We'll recognize him as an expert in the field of planning, counsel.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, you've had an opportunity to review the application of the documents that were submitted as part of that, correct?
Yes, I have.
And you have uh you have toured the property and heard the testimony that was presented this evening?
Yes.
If you can, provide the board with an overview with respect to the relief that's being requested, specifically the uh C variances noting that we have agreed to uh plant the necessary trees and are thereby eliminating that one variance. Uh if you can provide your analysis and your review with respect to the other relief being requested.
Sure thing. So we're here for a two-family dwelling proposed in a two-family zone in a neighborhood that's comprised of a mix of one and two-family dwellings. The reason we're here in front of this board, of course, is because two-family dwellings are site plan exempt, so there's no site plan here. Uh there's just some C relief that the applicant is seeking, but in the overall picture, relatively modest from the requirement of the zone scheme. We've got a lot area deficiency, which is about ninety-one percent compliant, two thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet, where twenty-five hundred square feet would be the minimum that's required. Similarly, the lot width is twenty-three point five feet, where twenty-five feet would be the minimum that's required. And then a very de minimis rear yard setback, twenty-nine point six feet, where thirty feet would be the minimum that's required. Um this is a ne- again, is a neighborhood that's comprised of one and two-family dwellings. And uh Mr. Chair, with your permission, um I'd just like to share a copy of your uh tax map to show the irregular shape of the property and and where it sits on South Ninth Street.
And if I may, uh Mr. Uh Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, because Ms. Juma had a different set of plans, so I'm gonna mark the plans that were submitted by Mister uh that were presented by uh Mr. Fernandez as A one, and we will get that over to her, just for clarification, and then this I would like to mark as A two.
Thank you, counsel, so much.
So A two shows the subject property outlined in yellow. Again, it's slightly deficient as to lot area and slightly deficient as to lot width. It's got this unusual irregular shape in a neighborhood that does have some irregular lots as well and other lots that are short of that twenty-five-foot requirement uh both around the subject site and behind the subject site as well. Again, it's a neighborhood that already has a mix of one and two-family dwellings, so what the applicant is proposing here is is not out of character with the with the area. All of the setbacks will comply, but for that rear yard setback, which is less than half a foot deficient. And just to show you the physical condition of the property, it's uh this the second page of A two. It's this vacant lot, again, this sort of angled lot, and Mr. Fernandez has provided a plan here uh that could substantially be accommodated within the site, notwithstanding um the its lack of of full size of twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh we reconcile the relief that the applicant is seeking under the C two balancing test, where the benefits of the application as a whole would outweigh any detriments. On the positive side, this application will promote the general welfare with new housing stock. Certainly, infill development that's compatible with the mass and scale and character of the neighborhood. Um purpose M or efficient use of land, taking a parcel that's already cleared and ideally suited to accommodate the development that's before the board. And purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment by filling a void in the local landscape and uh again, filling it with an attractive building that would add value and quality to the neighborhood. On the negative side, relief can be granted here without any substantially adverse impacts to the public or to the zone. The degree of departure from the zone scheme is is not substantial. Um again, percentages below what the actual lot area and lot width requirement would be, very de minimis setback relief. Uh the applicant has cured the deficiency for the street tree, for the shade trees. And um with that, I would offer that the statutory criteria for relief. And um with that, I would offer that the statutory criteria for relief are met here, and therefore approval is warranted. And that's all I have on direct.
Thank you, counsel?
Thank you, and Mister McDonough, your analysis is basically that this lot, in your opinion, the proposed dwelling. Uh, you agree with Mister Hazel's interpretation, which report that the proposed dwelling will be ample size and safe for healthy uh habitations, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, I have no additional questions from Mister McDonough.
Thank you, questions for the planner from the board, are there any questions? From the board for the planner? If none, are there questions from members of the public for the planner? Questions from members of the public for the planner? I see none, counsel, do you have any other witnesses?
I do not.
Um, are are there any members of the public that care to make a statement regarding this application? Uh, if so, uh please identify yourself by using the raised hand feature. Care to make a statement, we'll, we'll ask that you submit yourself to the oath. And uh give your statement for the record. So if any members of the public would like to make a statement. Please identify yourselves by using the raised hand feature. At the bottom of your computer screen, or if you're on the telephone by pressing star nine. I ask that you do so now, please. I see no raised hands, do you Mister Secretary?
Nope.
Um, seeing no raised hands, counsel?
Uh, I believe, uh I have no additional witnesses, as I indicated, um just wanna thank you for your time and attention this evening and the consideration for this application. Uh, we respectfully submit that we believe the testimony you heard this evening, as well as the uh. From our architect and our planner for the justification and the relief that's being requested is warranted, and we submit and respectfully. Uh, request approval for this application, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, and now in discussion, we have discussion from the board. Discussion from the board? Commissioner Komi Sanz?
Uh, it's a pretty straightforward application, what they're asking for is minimal. Uh, in my belief, uh I'd be in favor of the project, I just uh. Urge to people testifying, maybe have just a little bit of clarity going in as to what exactly spaces are gonna be used as in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Komiya.
I say the same, um as Commissioner Komi Sanz, it's a pretty straightforward application, also in support of it.
Thank you, any further comments from the board? With the comments from the board, if none, we have a motion, please.
Motion to approve ZBA twenty-five dash zero four 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 three. South Ninth Street, with all conditions mentioned on the record.
Uh, motion for approval with conditions, Komi Sanz, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kogan, call the role, please.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardisty?
Yes.
Commissioner Kumi Sanz?
Yes.
Commissioner? Cheer off on.
Yes. Thank you, your uh application is approved.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Mister Secretary?
Yes.
Call the next case, please.
Okay. Next application is ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Premises are four fourteen dash four thirty Wilson Avenue, four thirty-six dash four seventy-eight Wilson Avenue. And twenty-eight dash forty-two Ball Street. In the I three zone, the applicant proposes to construct a hundred and fifty-six thousand square foot warehouse, including a refrigerated. Warehouse space, loading dock, mechanical and utility rooms, and a reception area. Existing storage warehouse on the site will remain. Applicant is seeking a D six variance for exceeding maximum permitted height. Uh, C variances for exceeding maximum impervious uh lot coverage. And insufficient building facade transparency times seven, site plan approval is required.
Now, I ask that everyone on the applicant's team, please raise your hand. So we can identify you and bring your hand. Uh, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name, counsel? Just kidding.
It's, it's been a while, it's uh Michael Olivera with the offices of Kiesa Shahidi and Gian Tomasi appearing on behalf of the applicant.
It's been a while, we're not, we're not up to that point yet, just.
Introduction's over, I'm done.
Um, is Mister Rogario on your team, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is uh? Once he's in, is your entire team in?
I don't know who else is in, so it's hard for me to tell you, sir. I have Mister Fernandez, I have Mister McDonough, I have Mister Zama, there, I, we're good.
Okay, uh I, uh this is um. This is application ZBA dash twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Four fourteen, four thirty Wilson Avenue, four thirty-six, four seventy-eight Wilson Avenue. And uh twenty-eight forty to forty-eight Ball Street. Um, are there any? Um, are there, are there any? Uh, and I'm sorry about that, are there any objectors? To this application, if so, please identify yourself by raising your hands. Uh, any objectors, please raise your hands now. The Board of Adjustment made the following finding with respect to this property. It's located in Newark's industrial district neighborhood, on the southern side of Wilson Avenue. To the west of the New Jersey Turnpike right of way. The lot area is approximately six hundred nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-two square feet. The surrounding land uses consist of warehouses and container storage. Uh, counsel, your appearance for the record.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board, Michael Olivera with the offices of Kiesa Shahidi and Gian Tomasi appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, good to see you, counsel.
Good to be seen.
Um. I see no raised hands for for objectors. Is that correct, Mister Secretary?
Correct.
Counsel?
Thank you, um Rogiro Properties LLC is here this evening seeking a D six variance for exceeding the permitted height. Preliminary and final site plan approval and bulk variance relief in connection with the property. As you said, on Wilson Avenue and the former twenty-eight to forty-two Ball Street. Block five oh four five, lots five and fifteen, and block five oh four six, lot thirty-five, on the tax maps of the city. Uh, we're here seeking approval for a refrigerated warehouse, loading dock and reception area. To be added to the existing, the existing uses at the site. As you said, Mister Chairman, the applicant is proposing to construct a hundred and fifty-six thousand square foot warehouse. Including, including a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of refrigerated warehouse space. Twenty-eight thousand eight hundred square feet of a loading dock, mechanical and utility rooms. And thirty-two hundred square feet of a reception area. The existing cold storage warehouse, wholesale trade truck, tractor trailer and heavy vehicle and truck repairs. Maintenance and parking or storage, along with the existing truck sales and or rentals are to remain. One of the existing tenants is Rider Truck Rental Inc. and Rider Truck Vehicle Sales LLC. They are proposing to continue to utilize this site to conduct vehicle maintenance on a fleet full of service trucks and trailers. And they are also proposing truck parking, fueling and washing as well for their used truck sales. But Rider is already a tenant, has been occupied and util- utilizing this property. In this manner for over twenty years, and they would like to continue in this space, and we certainly would like to keep them. Uh, the property, as we said, is located in the third industrial district, in which the proposed uses listed above are permitted. The new warehouse proposed is also permitted as a conditional use in the I three district. I'm happy to report that the plans for this project will be revised to conform with all nine conditional use standards. And will therefore be a conforming use, and no D three variance is required. We are before the zoning board of adjustment because we are exceeding the permitted maximum height, which requires a D six variance. Bulk variances are also required for exceeding the maximum impervious coverage on the lot. And insufficient building facade transparency. We're also here requesting preliminary and final site plan approval. The plans will be described in greater detail by our professionals. The professionals we intend to call are our engineer, Bamman Izadmer of Development Engineering LLC. And our planner, John McDonough. Our architect, George Fernandez, is also here, we're not pro- uh proposing to provide any testimony from him. But he is available to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to the architectural aspects of this uh plan. We also have a representative of the applicant present that can answer any operational questions that that the board may have if they are needed. If I may, then I'd like to call our first witness, the engineer, Mister Izadmer.
Uh, right before you do that, just to um, just to be clear, um. As a condition of approval, your applicant is agreeing to comply with all conditions? Um, so as to do away with the D three variance?
Yes, sir, there are, there are nine conditions, six of them were raised in the memo from uh Mister Hazel with regard to not meeting the conditions. Uh, Mister Azad Mayor spoke with Mister Hazel, and we've agreed to amend our plans. So that we we meet all nine conditions of conditional use.
Okay, are there uh uh are there any other um? Uh, conditions that you're agreeing to that are taking away variances?
Uh, Mister Izadmer will testify to that, but. We have all of the memos from water and sewer engineering, and also from uh Mister Hazel. And we can tend to comply with all of those requirements or suggestions.
And and your applicant is uh agreeing to do that as uh each one as a condition of approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mister Izadmer, raise your right hand, please, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, give us your address and your relationship to this application.
Uh, sure, good evening Mister Chair and Board Commissioners, as well as Board Professionals. My name is Bamman Izadmer, Principal of Development Engineering. My business address is five five zero Colfax Road, Wayne, New Jersey. And I'm the site civil engineer for the project.
Thank you, Mister Zadmir, is your art uh engineering license in the state of New Jersey in full force and effect?
Yes, it is.
Uh, Doctor Zadmir is well known to this board, will accept him as an expert in the field of engineering, counsel?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister, Doctor Izadmir, if you could, please, uh have you prepared these and are you familiar with the site plans submitted to the board in connection with this application?
Yes, I do.
Please go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, with Chair's permission, I would like to share the set of plans that we have submitted to the board.
Please.
So can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as the council explained, uh, there is an existing warehouse on the site. Uh, which consists of four separate lots. The existing lots are about. Almost um. Uh, I will go through each lot separately, there are, there are two lots, thirty-five point one and thirty-five point two in block. Five oh four six. Lot three, uh thirty-five point one measures roughly six point nine acres. And lot thirty-five point two measures about four acres, so altogether. Uh, those two lots are about almost eleven acres. And our client purchased recently the neighboring lot to the north. Uh, which is lot five and ten, and those two lots together are about three point four acres. So the project basically is an expansion of the existing use on the site. Uh, on lot thirty-five point one and thirty-five point two, which is a warehouse, truck storage, trucking. As well as the riders um. Uh, tracking lease and repair and sales. So I will walk you through the existing condition, which is shown on sheet number nine, so if you. Bear with me. I will go to that sheet.
Mister, Doctor Azadmer, just for purposes of clarification, the plans that you're referring to are the plans that were submitted. Dated June tenth, twenty twenty-five, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so as you can see from this plan, the demo plan. There is an existing lot, uh there is an existing warehouse building here that my cursor is showing. Uh, so this warehouse will remain. And then there is this existing that the council referred to for the rider. But we are proposing to demolish about roughly more than half of this building. In order to provide basically easy access to the proposed warehouse. So we would be basically erecting a fence separating the rider area with the warehouse areas. And we will be maintaining the existing access off of Wilson Avenue to both side, to both portions of the. Uh, of the site. So we will have a gate here at the lower part of the site, going to the riders' area. And then we will continue using this main gate for the warehouse operation. And we will be modifying the. The drainage system, as well as the lighting, to provide the the required amount of lighting in the area, in the parking area, as well as. Will be working with New Jersey DEP, as well as with your professionals, to satisfy the drainage requirements. The existing, um, other than the the removal of this portion of the terminal, truck terminal. Uh, we have almost removed everything on those two newly acquired lots. So the lots are basically available. Uh, once hopefully if uh the board deems this application. Approval, we will start uh going into the next phase of design, and hopefully con- uh starting the construction. So now I will refer back to the site plan, which is sheet number two. Uh, this is the overall plan. That you will, you're seeing a sort of a beige color. Uh, this is the proposed um new warehouse, it measures about a hundred. Uh, thirty thousand. I have to enlarge this so I can see better. So it's about hundred thirty-one thousand square feet. Uh, the main warehouse, and then the the auxiliary uh loading dock is about thirty-three thousand square foot. And then we also have a connector, which is between the two uh warehouses. So that's, that measures about twenty feet, as you can see, it goes all the way to the rear of the proposed building. And it connects the two warehouses together, so that we could minimize loading unloading activity. So if a truck comes in to pick up uh frozen food from the new warehouse, as well as fresh food from the old warehouse. Everything will be coming into this loading dock area, and a truck could pick it up. Or vice versa, if a truck is unloading fresh food and frozen food, the same thing will happen. And the advantage of this new warehouse is that it's fully automated, it's gonna work with basically full automation and robots. And we will be maintaining um basically all the employees of the existing building. And we are uh expecting about a hundred fifty, most of them from Newark residents, that will be working on this new warehouse. In terms of um the landscaping, we have done the best we could do under the circumstances, the entire. Rear of this building will be landscaped. Uh, the proposed building. And we have reduced the parking area in this triangular shape. Uh, to provide only thirty-one parking spaces, and more than half of this area is all landscaped. So we could meet the landscaping requirement in the zone for the parking lot. And we've also provided additional landscaping in this area, right below um, below the main warehouse.
Now, Doctor Izadmir, before, before you go any further with regard to landscaping. One of the issues was was the number of street trees and or onsite trees.
Sure.
Proposed for this site, and are we able to meet the the city's requirements?
Yes, we are, uh, we are required to provide twenty-three shade trees alongside. Of Wilson Avenue in the frontier, uh in in the public right of way. We are proposing twenty-four. And in terms of the onsite shade trees, we are required to provide thirty-three, we are providing thirty-four. Again, those are a spread um alongside. That you could see on this plan here. So these are all the trees alongside Wilson Avenue. And then we have about six of them here by the gate. We have additional ones here. And then these are all the onsite trees alongside the easterly border, easterly property line. And then we could even, uh, and then we have here on the westerly side of the property. But we could even plant more trees in the back area of the proposed warehouse, as well as in the rear side of the existing warehouse. So, so we can meet all those shade tree requirements.
So just, just one moment, Mr. Hazel?
Yes, I just want to be clear, I'm sorry to interrupt here, but, um, I, I, if you look at my chart, I do see that the applicant has met the street tree and what I would call the parking area tree requirement. Um, they're proposing fifty four trees and they have three areas that they need to be planted. One is on the street front and shade trees. Onsite trees and one would be parking lot trees. And we're coming up a little short when we divide them up all three areas. So I've attributed the trees that they're proposing to the shade trees along this Wilson Avenue and in the parking lot, which leaves them short about twenty three trees for onsite trees. So if, uh, if those trees can be accommodated on the, uh, the western side of the building of the new warehouse, then that would be all well and good.
Um, uh, yes, I agree. What we will do is
Okay. Sorry.
Mr. Isadmir?
Yes. Um, again, Isadmir, the site engineer, we will provide, we will work with the city's professionals, Mr. Hazel, Mr. Charles Rafikanta, and your arborist to provide as many tree as is required and as many tree as we can fit into the site.
Okay, but just, just, if you could just clear it up for me.
Sure.
The street trees, thirty two are required, is that correct?
Uh, no, twenty four.
I'm sorry, twenty seven required.
Let me just double check.
I think it was twenty twenty five, you're wrong.
Okay. It's here on the chart.
Okay.
Um, trees.
Mr. Hazel, how many street trees are required?
Twenty three.
Twenty three trees, twenty three point four.
And as a condition of approval, you're applying, uh, you're, you're supplying how many?
Twenty four.
And the onsite trees? How many are
Onsite trees, thirty three is required and we are proposing thirty four.
You agree with those numbers, Mr. Hazel?
Not quite. Again, there, there, there's onsite trees and they are shade, they are parking lot trees.
Yeah.
I counted the trees you provided as, I guess, calling them onsite, I counted them as shade trees for the, um, for parking lot trees because they were, most of them around the parking lot. So I, I counted those as parking lot trees. So that leaves you deficient for the remaining shade trees, I mean, the mainly, remaining onsite trees.
Sure, I agree with you.
Nine trees that I attribute to your onsite tree requirement, and that leaves a balance of twenty three.
That's correct. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we require, the zone requires thirty three trees and we are providing thirty three. So I'm just going to correct myself.
So, Mr. Isadmir, do you agree that you're then short twenty three onsite trees?
Yes.
Okay, um, as, as, as council, as a condition of approval, will your applicant agree to work with, uh, uh, the board's planner, uh, uh, city staff and the city arborist to, um, find additional places to plant as many trees as possible? And only after that, uh, and with the approval of, uh, the city arborist and, uh, board staff will, uh, your applicant be required to make the, uh, the required, uh, submission to the, uh, the tree fund?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hall, did you have a question about this?
It, it wasn't a question, but he indicated, I guess, towards the back on the western side, he had the ability to just face to add trees. And he, it wasn't specific at all, just that he could plant a lot of trees. Could he elaborate on that?
Uh, sure, uh, Mr. Hall. Uh, we could plant trees as my cursor shows here in the back area. This is all basically vacant, uh, area of the site. And it will be seated and sowed. And we could plant two rows of trees here in the back. And we can also plant trees in this landscaping area uh, next to the parking lot.
So, so, no, go ahead, I want to, go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then I, as I indicated before, we could also, we are proposing trees alongside the easterly property line, which are shown here. Uh, this row of trees, you know, next to the parking lot. So we could also do them here.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm beginning to love trees. I don't, I don't know why. I don't know why, but I'm being educated on it. Um, I would like to take advantage of all this open space and not talk about the possibility of planting trees, but let's get them in here. This is a great opportunity.
Yeah, Mr. Isadmir, how many, have, have you calculated how many trees you could plant in that rear room?
Uh, we could easily plant another thirty to forty trees in the back. And we will exceed Mr. Hazel's requirement.
So, um, you, you can, uh, Mr. Hazel, that, those would
Yes.
Would you constitute that, those as the, uh, the onsite trees that you said they were short?
Yes.
So council, as, as a condition of approval, would you then agree um, to plant all required, uh, uh, no less than all required uh, twenty three additional trees?
Based on Dr. Isadmir's testimony that we have more than enough space, we certainly would.
It's, it's all on you, Dr. Isadmir.
I, I come, I concur. And I confirm.
Okay, that's counsel well said.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also love trees, so.
Well, I, 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 I mean, what we're learning is trees are, are, uh, are important for the urban desert to reduce heat, to clean the air and to help with the, the childhood asthma problem we have in our city, right?
That's correct, especially in this area, even though basically the, the entire site consisting of four lots are hundred percent, almost hundred percent impervious. We are reducing that imperviousness by creating additional landscaping which didn't exist before. Because don't forget that this new lots that our client acquired used to be industrial sites, a hundred percent impervious. So we are reducing it, even though we are exceeding the allotment, but we are still reducing it.
That's, 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 that's important. And, and council, uh, even though you agreed to do the minimum, I hope that you will, uh, work with, uh, city staff to try and, uh, do as much as possible.
We certainly will.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Isadmir.
Um, so additionally, besides the tree planting and landscaping, we will work with Mr. Hazel to address those conditional use requirements, the ones that, uh, Mr. Olivier referred to. So we will meet all those conditions. And, uh, other than that, in terms of parking, as I said, we are proposing a fence alongside the riders' uh, area. And we will split the gate into two gates, two separate gates, one gate going to this new warehouse and the existing warehouse. And one gate leading to a riders' area of trucking, leasing and renting. Uh, in terms of the drainage, we will work with, as I said, with Department of Engineering as well as the DEP to address their comments and get the, uh, the required approvals. In terms of lighting, we have a lot of lighting alongside the building, as you can see, uh, shown by W one and along this side of the building. So wherever we cannot provide lighting on the fixture, uh, fix, uh, fixture lighting on the building, we are proposing poles, light poles within the area of the parking. So we will meet the parking requirements. Uh, I'm sorry, the lighting requirements. And
Dr. Isadmir, could you please describe for the board the street access for this property, both for drivers of the truck drivers and for any kind, any employees or other people that will be coming onto the site?
Sure, uh, we will be maintaining the existing access off of Wilson Avenue for both the truckers, the trucking activities, as well as for the employees. So everybody will enter from this main driveway here. But then we also had to, we are maintaining this existing driveway, which was leading to the old uses on these two properties. But even though this, uh, driveway was about seventy feet, we are reducing it. Um, just for twenty four feet, leading to this parking lot, additional parking lot for the staff and the visitors. And then they could also utilize this driveway connecting this brand new driveway, the proposed new driveway with the existing operation. So people still could main, uh, enter from the main gate and they use this driveway to access this new parking lot, or they could do vice versa and use the new, uh, the newly reduced driveway to this new parking lot and have access to this parking or to the old parking areas on the site.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Isadmir, do you have a, a rendering that we could show the proposed
Yes.
Site?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna also add that we will be having a, a, a green roof above the loading dock area, which is roughly thirty two thousand square foot. And then the entire, um, roof of the warehouse will be all solar panels. So this building is going to meet all the green requirements of any. And then we will have basically net zero, um, CO two, uh, during the construction and operation of this building. So that's another advantage, but I'm going to share with you now, uh, the where is my shit? Um, can everyone see this sketch?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, what happened here? Oh. For some reason, I just lost it. Oh, here we go. Hold on. Okay. Uh, this is a three dimensional perspective of the proposed warehouse. And if you recall, I was talking about the connectors, and this is what we mean by the connector. So the connector basically is connecting the the loading dock area with the existing loading dock area of the warehouse. And on the, uh, upper floors of the connector, we also have access from these offices here at the existing warehouse to the new offices that we are proposing on the second floor, third floor, and fourth floor of this small receptionist area. And then this is all the loading dock area here. And off of the third floor, we are proposing a complete green roof and a little basically, um, area for the employees, uh, to enjoy the outdoor. And then we are proposing also have a, um, rain capture next to this, um, green roof so that we could utilize the the rainwater off of the roof of this new building to be stored here and then utilized for the green roof and for other landscaping area. And now, we, go ahead.
Dr. Isadmir, I'm sorry. One of the variances that we're seeking this evening is for insufficient facade transparency. Can you please explain why the, the, the structure and the, the nature of this use makes it very difficult to provide additional transparency?
Sure, but we are providing transparency in this thirty two hundred footprint of the office and the reception area on two sides, as you can see them in this. But unfortunately, and then also we are providing them in this connector. But we cannot provide in the main warehouse because of the structural nature of the warehouse. The warehouse could not have any windows because it has to be hundred percent tight, airtight and waterproof. So there will be no window at all for condensation reason, for refrigeration, for other environmental aspect. But we are willing to work with the city officials to provide any type of artwork on the facade of this warehouse. So we are, we were just debating the other day with our client that we would probably put a sign here saying, welcome to Newark. Because this is also a gateway to the city. Turnpike is like two hundred feet away from the site. So this welcome to Newark sign could be easily visible from turnpike in both directions. So, and then we could also utilize all this facade. This is about four hundred feet by about a hundred forty feet high above the third floor, uh, of the green roof. So there is plenty of room to do some amazing artwork and other type of community signage.
And which leads to the, the second variance that we're asking for this evening, the D six variance with regard to height. Uh, my first question is the proximity to the airport. I would think that we would need to discuss this and receive the approval of the FAA, the Federal Air, Air Space Administration. Has that been done?
Yes, I had discussions about a year ago, uh, when the project was convinced, uh, conceived uh, with FAM, and they referred me to their website, and their website permits up to two hundred fifty feet of height. And as a matter of fact, uh, turnpike and other entities have light poles more than two hundred feet high within three hundred feet of the site. So height is not an issue in terms of the airport location or in terms of the flight path. But if we exceed ninety six feet that is permitted by the zone, so we would like to get, um, the height variance up to a hundred sixty feet. We're going to be close to that basically once we, uh, go through the design process of the structure. Now, the reason we are asking for a variance because uh, in this, uh, warehousing business for cold food, for, I'm sorry, frozen food, the volume is critical. So either we have to make the warehouse a lot larger, or we have to go high in order to accomplish the volume that we need. So this is about a hundred thirty thousand square foot. So in order to reach the optimum volume or optimum storage, we have to make it a hundred fifty feet high or under sixty feet high.
And the technology that will be utilized in this warehouse is a state of the art and as a result can go to the very top of a building such as this, a hundred and fifty feet in height. Is that correct?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, there will be no columns in this building, in this warehouse. Everything will be on a rack system that will be fully automated. So the automation will enable the operator, uh, via a computer control to go up all the way to the ceiling of the warehouse and pick up, uh, the intended basically pallet and bring it down and have it delivered to the trucks or pick it up from the truck and put it all the way up a hundred sixty feet within the warehouse.
And just to reaffirm what you had stated earlier, there will still be, even with all of this automation, an additional need for a hundred and fifty or so employees?
That's correct.
And of those hundred and fifty employees, based on the history of, of this, uh, this site and this, uh, applicant, the predominant number of those people will be Newark residents. Is that correct?
That's correct. I was advised eighty five percent of their current employees are Newark residents. That's correct. I was advised eighty five percent of their current employees are Newark residents at the existing warehouse. So if that pattern sticks and is followed, we will have about a hundred thirty Newark residents employed for this project.
Doctor Isadmir.
That's permanent.
Doctor Isadmir, are you stating that with engineering certainty?
Definitely. I'm experienced from experience.
Okay.
And that does not, that does not count the employment of the Newark residents and other during the construction.
I think you've run afoul from your area of expertise.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
And Doctor Isadmir, if I may, just finally, we received three different reports with regard to this application. Were you able to review the water and sewer memo dated August eleventh of two thousand twenty five?
Yes, I did.
Were you able to review the engineering department memorandum dated August seventh, two thousand twenty five?
I also did.
And you were able to review the planner's report, which was dated August eighth of two thousand twenty five? Is that correct?
Yes.
And is there any issue with any of the comments, suggestions, et cetera, that were raised in any of these memos?
No.
And I'm sorry, again, with regard to Mr. Hazel's report, the planner's report, we have agreed to amend our plans so that we can comply with all of the conditions that apply to a conditional use standard. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Doctor Isadmir. Do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Unless if the board commissioners wanna see the floor layout, we have also those available and elevations in details. So, but I thought this would basically show the whole project.
Thank you, Doctor Isadmir.
Sure.
I have nothing further at this time of this witness.
Thank you, Council. Commissioner, right before I get to you, I'd like to give an opportunity to Mr. Traficante, Mr. Traficante.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Traficante, you swear affirm testimony about to provide the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and your title for the record.
My name is Charles Traficanti. I am a principal engineer and a professional engineer. I'm in the employment of the City of Newark Department of Engineering. My license is active and in good standing with the State Board.
Sir.
All right. Doctor Isadmir, your lighting plan shows several locations where the light intensities is less than the minimum required for access drives, access aisles and parking lots. Are you saying you agree to revise lighting plan to meet the minimums?
Yes, of course.
Okay, all right, all right. As well as the recommendations that they put in curbs and sidewalks were needed. In the public driveway for Wilson Avenue.
Actually, we will continue the brand new sidewalk that property owner had already installed in front of his old property frontages. And we will continue that all the way westerly till end of the newly acquired properties.
To cross the entire frontage of the site?
Yes, the entire site.
All right, then. All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall.
Doctor, you were a wealth of information and thank you. I guess I'll start with the availability of signage on the building. Welcome to Newark. Love it, love it. But Chairman, can we memorialize that? That this is gonna be welcome to Newark and we have the ability to do other positive advertising throughout the building.
Let me throw something out there. Tell me if this is something that you would concur with, Commissioner Hall. Council, as a condition of approval, would you agree to work with board planner and other staff identified by board planner and the city to place on this building appropriate signage and or artwork?
Yes, we would.
Is that acceptable to you, Commissioner Hall?
Thank you very much, Chairman. That is acceptable and I can move my second.
And I note that council agreed to that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
Yes, Doctor, you also pledged a certain amount of jobs to Newark residents and certainly we all appreciate that. I'm hoping that Monford is listening, but if that's gonna happen, we should have an effort through the City of Newark to make sure it happens and we're not just talking about Newark jobs. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Monford, Vice Chair Monford.
Yes.
Could you help us out with fashioning a condition of approval regarding working with the appropriate Newark office to get Newarkers jobs here?
That will be through the Newark Works Department. So as a condition of approval, they agree to work with the affirmative action and Newark Works Committee for employment for Newark residents.
Council?
We have no objection to that either, Mr. Chair.
And you accept that and your applicant will accept that as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a third, not concern or something that Doctor raised and asked a question before he raised, but I wanted to hear it again. The main reason for the height is to increase their storage or product ability. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
It also, just to finish the thought, Commissioner, it also allows for the new technology that's proposed here. It's expensive technology and it really only works if you utilize the height. It's, you could go back and use older technology, but it wouldn't have the same effect. This literally can go up a hundred and fifty feet and store materials on the very height of the last, you know, row or aisle or whatever you wanna call it, as opposed to the technology that existed when the first building was constructed.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Doctor Isadmir.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We've been bouncing back and forth, a hundred and fifty feet high, a hundred and sixty feet high. Do you know to a certainty what's being requested here?
A hundred sixty feet is being requested.
Mr. Hazel?
Yes.
That's, in your report, you said a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, cuz I remember seeing it somewhere and but I will.
Okay, as Mr. Hazel looks, Council?
I'm listening.
Yes, I will accept the one sixty. That would be of record. If a variance of the height is granted by the board, it would be for up to no more than one sixty. And that the record should reflect that.
So that's what, sixty four feet over what's permitted?
That's correct.
Yeah, something like that.
Sixty four, ninety four is ninety six is permitted, Mr. Chair. We are asking for a hundred sixty.
Wow. Are there any other questions for the engineer? Additional questions for the engineer? Mr. Isadmir, can electronic signs be put on these walls?
If the board approves them, yes. Because the technology has improved so much that it's nothing but a large sized TV, very lightly. Panels.
I, that would be something that maybe should be considered. I don't wanna make.
My only concern, Mr. Chairman, is with electronic signage, if there's an issue with the turnpike and its proximity to the site. I don't know if there would be any issues that we're allowing to be created as a result of offering electronic signage on such a large site that close to the turnpike.
Yeah, I, we've given electronic signage closer to the turnpike before. I just don't know if it would require additional.
I don't know either, Chairman, and that's why I'm raising the question. I don't wanna promise something that we may not be able to deliver.
Understood, but perhaps it's something that your applicant can explore with our board planner.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I agree.
Thank you. Well, if Isadmir agrees. Council?
I have nothing further, Doctor Isadmir. If there are no other questions, I'd like to call our planner.
And before I do that, are there any questions for the engineer from members of the public? Do members of the public have any questions for the engineer? If so, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're on telephone, please press star nine. I'd ask that you do so now. I see you raised hands, Council.
If I may, I'd like to call Mr. McDonough to provide planning testimony.
Mr. McDonough, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm testimony about to provide the truth? Swear or affirm testimony about to provide the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, give us your address and relationship to this application, please.
John McDonough, one oh one Gibraltar Drive, project planner.
Thank you, Council. Well, Mr. McDonough, is your New Jersey planning license in full force in effect?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough is well known to the board. He will accept him as an expert in the field of planning, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McDonough, if you could, please explain to the board the materials that you reviewed in preparation for your testimony this evening?
Sure, we conducted a standard planning analysis in support of the application. We looked at existing conditions, proposed conditions. We looked at the relief the applicant is seeking. Not a long list of relief here. And then, of course, we applied the well established statutory criteria to evaluate that relief and whether it's justifiable.
And as a result of this review, can you please provide your testimony regarding the availability or the ability to grant these variances without substantial detriment?
Sure thing. This is a land use that requires additional height. It's a permitted use in the zone. We're in your I three heavy industrial zone district and this is going to be a cold storage use that caters to the food industry. So right off the bat, we have a good use here, a permitted use that certainly promotes the general welfare. And we typically see buildings north of a hundred and sixty feet. They could rise up to a hundred and eighty feet when we're looking at the coal storage industry. Our applicant is a well established business here with a longstanding commitment to the community and looking to enhance and modernize and provide new state of the art facility to serve its customer base and the public. And if we look at the surrounding land use context, and this is a simple Google image view of the subject site, you can see that we are here in the heart of an industrial district between the turnpike and Route one and nine, right on Wilson Avenue. Right next to where we have the container storage yard, which rises up multiple, multiple stories high. So in this particular area, and given the fact that Wilson is an elevated roadway going above the railroad tracks, we think the relief here will have minimal, if any, impact with respect to a height standpoint. Again, height is inherent to the nature of the use as cold storage. When we look at the positive criteria here, it will promote the general welfare with a new building, a new state of the art building that will promote jobs, ratables and the services that a permitted use will provide. It promotes efficient land use by taking an established industrial site, putting it back to productive, modern use. And then finally, purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment with a nice, clean, modern industrial building that will certainly unify the site and take some of the elements of that open outdoor storage that's presently there away. Counterbalancing that for D six height relief, we always look at the purposes of height control in the land use law. And there's a case called the Grasso case that talks about the purposes of height control. None of the Grasso purposes for height control are being violated here, including blocking of scenic views, creating an obtrusive, imposing, overbearing structure in the context of the landscape. I think it was important here that not only will this not block scenic views, but it will certainly not interfere with flight paths. And you heard the testimony about the FAA compliance and letter of endorsement. This is not going to create any negative shadow effects on the neighboring buildings and certainly not going to create a population density or intensity of use that would exceed the carrying capacity of the land, again, falling back on the testimony that you heard before me. So the positives here are numerous. The detriments are minimal with respect to that height relief. So I believe the D six justification is there. Subsidiary to the D relief, we've got some C relief related to the lot coverage at eighty nine point six percent, where eighty five percent is the maximum allowed. That's certainly an improvement over the existing condition, which is looking close to one hundred percent. And therefore, the applicant is actually improving the overall condition. And then, of course, the relief related to the transparency is inherent to the nature of the use for security purposes and the nature of an industrial building. From an environmental standpoint, we're looking to lessen the impacts of light into the building, which increases the costs environmentally and the environmental impacts that would be associated with cooling the building. So again, we think that relief is reasonable and appropriate here. For all the reasons given by Mr. Fernandez, I'm sorry, Mr. Bamman Isadmir before me, I think this application is consistent with good planning principles and certainly meets the statutory test and warrants approval. With that, we'll get this thing off the screen and open up to any questions.
Council, anything further for the planner?
I have nothing further or no further questions of Mr. McDonough.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes, Mr. McDonough, you said in the beginning of your statements, you talked about the height being necessary or going along with the business. Can you talk a little bit more about why the height is important?
I think it's inherent to the way cold storage operates with vertical stacking and efficient use of land. I think it's a more efficient way of cooling the building and lessens the development footprint by having a smaller there. But in my experience, greater height and heights in this range of that one hundred and sixty to one hundred and eighty foot range is typical of cold storage or refrigerated warehouses.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions for the planner? So I, Mr. McDonough, everyone has said how this is, how the height is necessary. But really, there's been no testimony specifically as to why. Why should, from a planning standpoint, which you can speak to? I know you've taught me a great deal about trees. You've taught us all a lot about trees and I appreciate that and I'm serious about that. I don't know that you can teach us as much about why cold storage, the need for heightened cold storage, but from a planning viewpoint, this is sixty four feet higher. This is gonna tower over everything by quite a bit. You didn't address that.
Again, Mr. Chair.
Be concerned about that.
I think the impact of this land use, given given what's around it, the surrounding land use context, we're not going to overwhelm any neighborhood. My understanding, again, of the need for vertical storage when we're dealing with refrigerated warehouses or cold storage is to optimize, and these are probably technical answers, Mr. Chairman, to minimize heat loss, to optimize airflow, to increase energy efficiency, are typical things that I hear. And as I've said, it's common that they range in height, pushing that one hundred and fifty foot limit. It's not atypical to see a building of this size with cold storage.
Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, I don't wanna be the dead or, excuse me for my slang. I think one of the questions I asked earlier regarding and I think I asked it to the engineer and council. It was basically to get more product in the building for a less technical. And then you alluded to some other facilities in that area, which is a warehouse area, that they had some height. What side of those other facilities that are in close proximity to this particular project?
Well, again, there's the bridge near the site. There's the elevated roadway. You've got the stacking of those containers, which rises up like a little mini city next door, and I could certainly put that back up again.
Would you?
And give us a height. Throw out some numbers, Mr. McDonough, even though you're desperately trying not to do that.
Okay, so. Trying to find my exhibit where it went to. Just bear with me one second. Here it is. Okay. Okay, can you all see the screen again? I have a little flag on the subject site. And again, you can see the storage containers. I'm gonna see if I can get you a little, a little number here. These, I've witnessed them six containers high, so I'm just gonna check. So, if a, okay, if a storage container is approximately ten to twelve feet, you're looking at sixty feet there, plus or minus. Again, I'm not sure that they're actually six containers high. It looks close to that, and I'm not sure what's actually permitted over there. But again, that gives you a little context as well.
So, this would be approaching just under three times the height of those, of the highest stacked containers.
It would be tall, correct.
And would you say those are the highest buildings or in the area, those stacked containers?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough, isn't it true that there are light poles for the turnpike that are probably two hundred feet tall?
There are certainly utilities in the area, correct. And if it helps the board, can zoom down to street level. Again, there's that bridge that I was speaking to. There's our site on the left. You do have another cold storage facility there.
What's the height of that?
This is a smaller one. This is a different type of building, but that's more in line with a traditional warehouse. Forty-foot clear span, maybe?
That's our existing site, isn't it?
Yes.
It. If I may, Mr. Chairman, there may be operational issues that can be resolved, that may resolve some of your questions. If I could, I'd like to call Mr. Ruggiero to present some testimony about his knowledge of the cold storage industry.
And he has an expertise in this area?
I've been in the business for fifty years. My name is Rocco Ruggiero.
Mr. Ruggiero, hold on. I'm not speaking to you. Speaking of counsel. Counsel, he has, he has some expertise in this area?
Mr. Ruggiero has been a client of mine for many years. He has operated in cold storage for as long as I've known him. And he is accepted as an expert, as he has done a tremendous amount of business in this area.
Are you gonna be seeking to have him qualified as an expert in this area or just as a fact witness?
This is a fact witness.
Okay. Mr. Ruggiero, and I hope you haven't been operating in cold storage for that many years, Mr. Ruggiero.
I have.
Or if you have, that you have a thick coat. Could you raise your witness, please? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to provide be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and give us your address and relationship to this application, please?
Okay, my name is Rocco Ruggiero. My home address is the business address is four seven four Wilson Avenue. And I've been in this business in Newark, actually, for about fifty years. The reason why these refrigerator warehouses are being built.
Mr. Ruggiero, if you could, please, I have, I'm gonna ask you some questions. If you could give the board your opinion or your information that you have with regard to this industry. You presently occupy Garden State Cold Storage, which is on this site already. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you have familiarity with this industry? As you said, you've been in it for over fifty years?
Yes.
Is there new technology that you're seeking to utilize in this new building, if it were to be granted?
Yes.
And what kind of, what is the rationale or the reasoning behind the height that we're requesting?
Okay, the typical building that you see there are usually about fifty-five to sixty feet tall, and that's what that one is. And they're usually operated in machines, parrot trucks, that an employee sits in and goes up with it like an elevator. Up to sixty feet. I've been in it myself. It's quite scary. But that's about the limit you can go with these machines. Going higher than that, you have to go automated. There will be no employees working inside the freezer itself because it's gonna be all automated. And one of the reasons to go that high and mostly new freezer warehouses that are being built, they're all going in the same direction because of the automation. You cannot build a freezer that high and operate it the way they've been operating these fifty-five foot warehouses because they don't have machines that could go up that high. And it would be quite scary to be up one hundred and fifty feet on the top of a pole. That's what it looks like when you're in one of these machines. So, that's the basic reasons why they're going up. The technology is very expensive.
If, Mr. Ruggiero, if you're familiar, do you know that there are other buildings, whether they're in Newark or in somewhere else in the state of New Jersey, that utilize this technology and have this kind of height for a freezer warehouse?
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we even traveled to Europe because they're a lot more advanced. And we want to see their operations there, and it's just amazing. That's the way of the future.
Now, if you were to build this warehouse under the old style five, fifty or sixty feet tall, how much acreage would you have to occupy in order to utilize the same square footage?
I would have to utilize, let's see, I'm ten thousand, fifty thousand square feet, and the new one that holds ten thousand pallets. So, I would have to do eighty thousand, eighty thousand square feet, no, fifty, four hundred thousand square feet building.
So, that would be a massive structure that would occupy acres of land?
Yes. And in order to store what would be stored in this building, approximately eighty thousand pallets, would probably take about four hundred thousand square foot building at about sixty feet high.
Would it be as efficient as what we're proposing in this application?
No.
I have no other questions of Mr. Ruggiero.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any questions for the applicant from the board? Commissioner Hall, is that a new hand?
Actually, it would be one for Mr. McDonough. We can get him back.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McDonough, I just wanna be clear. We focus on the positives. We know that the FAA, we're not breaking the FAA rules. You talked about vision for all around the sites. Is there any negativities you could see with going up to that particular area?
Well, the typical things that we look at, Commissioner Hall, with additional height, tried to run through them, is blocking of scenic views. I think this certainly blends with the industrial character of the area. So, this is not going to block any scenic views for residents or the like. Also, creating an intensity of use that exceeds the carrying capacity of the land. This is a heavily automated facility. In fact, that's what I'm reading here is what really drives the added height for these types of facilities, these cold storage facilities, is that automation component. And then, lastly, just the visual impact. And again, given the fact that we are in the heart of an industrial area, in the center of an industrial area, at the confluence of two major roads, I don't see that as being a negative visual impact. It's, again, it's sort of a transportation hub. We do like to see additional density or mass.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, could we, could I ask the operator a question?
Please.
Sir, and you know, I know AI is here and it's coming. This is a, just a general question from my knowledge, I guess. This new technology that we're talking about, you talked about training, hiring NORC workers, although they won't be going up that high because you said, I don't know if it's possible, but dangerous. Some training that's gonna be available for those who have to operate this and would we be something for NORC to hire?
Yes, we would. We would put them to training, absolutely. It's mostly computer, it's mostly computer.
And we're gonna, generally, we hire people in warehouses. It's basic. Yeah, but what we're talking about here is a job that's not gonna be basic. And we'd wanna know that that you're not gonna just hire NORC because you're gonna train them to be able to, you know, make this adjustment into the world and not be left behind.
I'm sorry.
We want training for our NORC workers.
Absolutely. How can I, how can I put them to work without training them? That wouldn't be efficient on my part.
Oh, it wouldn't, but you could just hire different people and don't train them. They may have some skill. I'm suggesting a NORC worker.
Yes. I have mostly all Newark works now. I've had some for forty years.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I have one, I have one more question, Mr. Ruggiero, if I may.
Counsel.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you aware, Mr. Ruggiero, of what's called the Fiori property? And what's being constructed there? Can you please explain to the board what that entails and the height of that proposed building?
Yes, I was involved with that property at one time. We actually owned it and it was sold. I guess everybody knows that property, that FAA was complaining about because it was probably about hundred and fifty feet or more, just a mountain of dirt. And supposedly, I think about two years ago, I believe Blackrock bought it and they just built. I saw they did a beautiful job. I would estimate probably about five hundred thou, two five hundred thousand square foot warehouses. That if you measure them, they're probably at about pretty close to what we're looking to build.
And in your opinion, is that, has that created any problem for this area since you're already a user of this space?
No, absolutely not. As a matter of fact, they beautified the area. If you see it from the turnpike, it's beautiful compared to what was there before. It looked like a dump, a garbage dump.
Thank you, Mr. Ruggiero. I have nothing further.
Yes.
Are there any questions for the applicant from the board? Additional questions for Mr. Ruggiero from the board? If not, are there any questions from the public for the applicant? Questions from the public for the applicant?
You may also ask if there are any questions from the public for Mr. McDonough, because I don't believe we asked that.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any questions from the public for the planner? Are there questions, any questions from members of the public? If so, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen or mobile device. If you're on the phone, you can do so by pressing star nine. I'd ask you to do so now. I see no raised hands. Counsel, do you have any further witnesses in this?
We have no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
It's now the time for the public to take this opportunity to make statements. If you'd like to make a statement, I'm gonna ask you to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen or mobile device. If you're on the telephone, you'll have to press star nine. And once you've done so, I'll recognize you. I'll ask you to submit to the oath, and you'll be given adequate time to make your statement regarding this application. So, if any members of the public would care to make a statement, please identify yourself now by using the raise hand feature. I'd ask you to do so now. I see no raised hands. Counsel?
The Chairman and members of the board, thank you for your time in hearing this application. I think it's a pretty straightforward application from Mr. Ruggiero and his folks. What we're asking for is a D six height variance. And the explanation that's been given to the board is that automation and the new technology that's being utilized in this industry is what's driving the request for this building height. It's not out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. While there may not be that many hundred and fifty foot buildings, there are other buildings in this area. We have lighting poles that exceed this area. We've addressed the concerns that may exist with regard to the airport proximity by requesting ability to build this building from the FAA, and they've granted their approval. So, there really is no detriment. As Mr. McDonough testified in his, in his presentation, we, there are no negative criteria that are being established or broken as a result of this request. We're not blocking anybody's scenic view. We're not creating any kind of hazard. This is a third industrial area. It's, you know, the lowest of the uses that are permitted in the city of Newark. Again, this use itself is permitted. The testimony that you heard from Mr. Ruggiero is that, again, this is what's the future of the storage industry in the state of New Jersey and the world, as he's traveled to Europe to see this technology in action. It's going to provide jobs to the city of Newark, as stated in the testimony. Approximately one hundred and fifty new jobs will be provided as a result of this approval, if it were to be granted. And eighty-five percent or so of those people are Newark residents, so that's always a benefit. You're increasing the ratables to the city of Newark again with this brand-new building that will, that will be constructed again if the board grants the approvals we're seeking. And I think that, you know, it's a balancing act between the size of the building, whether it's built vertically or whether it's built horizontally. You would have to have a huge piece of land to build something equivalent to what's being built here because of the height that we're requesting, both with the automation and the technology that's being utilized and the saving of space and the creation, frankly, of additional green space, both between the roof, the solar panels that are being utilized as part of this application, and the extent, the addition of green space that doesn't presently exist at this site are all positive criteria. And again, part of that is because we're building vertically as opposed to horizontally. I would ask respectfully that the board grant the variance that we're seeking, along with site plan approval that we're asking for as well. Thank you for your time again.
Thank you. We're now in discussion. May I have discussion from the board? Commissioner Hall?
My original concern was the height. I went back and I asked Mr. McDonough, talking about the negatives. There were really no negatives. It's just the tallest building, will be the tallest building industrial area. I drilled down on the reasons why. To me, it was originally the business standpoint. Then we talked about new technology, and I refer to new technology as AI. And it makes this business more efficient. I get that. And, you know, it's a new way of doing things with that refrigeration business. You know, I can't say no to what is, and that's the future of this. Counsel pointed out all of the advantages that by going up vertically opposed to horizontally, horizontal. And, you know, I mean, it's all facts. And when I drill down on the negatives, I come up with many. So, I'm in favor of this project, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Troubled by this application. This is a tremendous separation from the ordinance. Sixty-four feet taller than what's permitted by our ordinance. And it's not because, well, the reasons to me are business reasons. This could be done without such a tremendous grant of variance. But the only thing we've been presented with are business reasons.
Do you want to leave the questions?
That being said, I have to thank counsel for putting together, and not unusual for this counsel, but thank counsel for putting together an informative but efficient presentation. And I want to thank counsel for working with his team to really virtually do away with all variances. Except for this height variance. And that, I know, was quite quite a bit of work, and I appreciate that. I would vote against this application, except as, but for Mr. McDonough's reason, saying that this particular site is really kind of uniquely qualified, to the extent that any site could be uniquely qualified for this type of deviation. Also, I think, as Commissioner Hall said, even though they are business reasons and mostly economic, they're technology, and technology is driving this. And I think counsel's juxtaposition on of height versus spread was informative. So because of those reasons, mostly because of the uniqueness of this site, I'll, that overcomes my concerns. And I'll vote in favor of this. I hope we're not, well, I'll leave it at that. Are there any other comments from the board? Other comments from the board? If none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hall.
Make a motion to approve application ZB-A dash twenty-four, dash twenty-eight, dash four-one-four, dash four-thirty, four-thirty-six, dash four-seventy-eight, Wilson Avenue, and twenty-eight, dash twenty-four-two, Wall Street, with all of the conditions.
We have a motion for approval with conditions. Commissioner Hall, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Comissarius. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardisty?
Yes.
Commissioner Comissarius?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kobian?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Manford? Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Chair of.
Yes, counsel, I'm gonna ask if you will agree to conditional preliminary and conditional final site plan approval. That those conditions will be removed if and when you're able to provide to the, to board staff and city staff's approval all the proof that all the conditions you've agreed, your clients agreed to today are being met. Is that something you'll agree to, counsel?
If it doesn't require a second hearing, we would have no objection to that.
Do you not?
I mean, if the professionals.
I'm feeling hurt now, counsel. You don't want to come back?
I love, I love to see you, but on other circumstances.
The only reason you'd have to come back, counsel, is you would have the power to come back if you could not or come to agreement with board staff.
Then absolutely, I would have no objection to that, Commissioner.
Thank you. May I have a motion for conditional preliminary and conditional final site plan approval?
Motion.
Motion, Torres. Second hall, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hardisty?
Yes.
Commissioner Comissarius?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kobian?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Chair of.
Yes. Congratulations. Your application and conditional preliminary and conditional final site plan approval have been granted.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Same to you. Good to see you, Mr. Olivera.
Good to see you as well, sir.
Mr. Chairman, good night. Thank you.
I am in a bit of darkness. Counsel, do we have resolutions to be memorialized?
Yes, we have one resolution, and that's ZB-A twenty-five dash oh-six, E twenty-five, Paul Mon Street.
Are there any proposed revisions or dissents? If none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardisty?
Yes.
Commissioner Comissarius?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kobian?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Chairman, chair of.
Yes. Are there any, Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
Are there any minutes to be memorialized?
Not that I am aware of. They don't trust me with minutes.
Counsel, are there any reasons that the board has to convene into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman, not tonight.
Great. Ms. Juma? Where are you, Ms. Juma?
Standing up. Standing up, actually.
Ms. Juma?
Yes.
I'm confused. Is it, is it not seven o'clock yet?
Yep.
What happened to seven o'clock? I thought going home at seven o'clock.
Yes, I am going now, actually. I have to, I'm hard to find, so you're right. I'm gonna go home now. But I did want to share with some, with the board when I'm gone for the night. Aren't you saying, uh-oh, Jerry? Oh, I'm not, I'm not, oh, so I can't remove the, but is your meeting adjourned, Mr. Chair?
Not yet. Do you want us to adjourn the meeting?
Sure, since we're all leaving.
We still have public in the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's, that's okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Undebatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, we are now adjourned.
Being a part of the.
I will say good night to everyone. Thank you for
they'll notice.
For coming to the meeting.